I want to, while we end the session and this is the discussion before we get into the regi hearing. Potter called me from the highway department today and they're having sale of excess.
Just leave that open Sam, please. Just leave it open. Thank you.
Thirteenth of September and Crawford's doing the sale. I'd kind of like for us to look at the sale to see if there's any used equipment that we can use, that we can buy. I mean, this one, this first one's going to be in Springfield. But I would like for Roger and Debbie, because Debbie's got the computer expert and Roger's not that good, to look at the Crawford Auction Company and it will show the pictures of everything that they've got. As Potter said, I don't know if there's anything there that you want. We know we've got some big mowers. We've got the time to reach over the top of the guardrail and do on the other side of the guardrail. He said it might not be anything you want. But that same equipment is a lot cheaper for us to buy and it might be a situation that we know Roger's got to have equipment from time to time and just, if it looks like it, let us know. We meet once more before the sale. Look at it and see if there's anything in there that might be advantageous to the street or to any of our departments because you know it's going to be cheaper than when you go buy it new.
That's all well maintained, too.
Oh yeah, it's well maintained. It's a, it's a situation that regardless of the gentleman sits here, you know, there are times you just have to go out and buy stuff regardless and you can't take bids at an auction, I'm sorry.
If it's state auction though, I think, well, maybe not because it's not a fixed price, so.
Well, it would be, I mean, we just got to do it sometimes to operate because we
can't spare $50,000 from something to go to an auction for ten.
If you're able to look at the inventory at the auction, you could put a list together of prices before you go so you already have two bids and that would be your third, so you can see.
An auction, an auction sale where the public is there is presumed to be for fair market value.
Fair market value at that time.
And that does not apply.
That's right. It's not, it's an auction. That establishes the value for something. It's just an idea, we're looking, Rogers needing some equipment, side cutters, things like that and it might be a way for some, for us to buy some of that stuff at a reasonable cost. We can't buy new, can't afford. Just an idea, something for them to look at, Potter to our next council, to our regular council, and bring the list, let's look at it.
Sure.
I got a question. Why are they burning down through the recycling plant?
Uh, the chief gave them the thumbs up, so we'll go ahead and burn.
We've got a burner ban, how could he do that?
Well, we had rain and, yeah, that was the question, I guess, posed to Eric.
Well, this has to get them off people downtown, plant is a little far then.
Beacon light, I haven't seen it on for a couple of months.
Lamont's giving, put the bulbs in there. It's burned out.
The bulbs are out.
They have the bulb, so Lamont's going to climb the tower here in a few days and put the bulb in and it'll be working again. It's turned off now, that's why. Every time it lightens, it knocks the switch out and burns the bulb.
It was bucked up in gravity.
Something wrong somewhere.
Yeah, hit all off.
The boys did a, Jersey's been to the driveways today and all, and everything I think really looks nice. They did the parking lot, they did the thing, they did mine. Mine driveway isn't, it's kind of a bad deal and I need it redone, but I'm going to accept it as it is.
Roger was actually worried about it. I talked to him this afternoon and I said, well, Jeff's called me at eight this morning and he didn't mention it, so it must be okay, or I would have known about it first thing.
Those boys were at my house at six o'clock this morning. Ran asphalt.
It looks good after, after Debbie's, it's looking good after.
I drove out by the street today.
It's nice and.
Roger, that's what I go by to look at.
And I'm a little worried about the southern end of Alberta Street over on the east side. That ditch is dirt and it's right up to that street and the water gets in there and that road's going to start to wash and it's going to give off that crack. I'm a little bit concerned about it to some degree.
Or cement there.
Do you mean on the left hand side or the south end?
If you're going north on the right hand side inside.
Parking lot looks good.
I don't know if that's what Mike was talking about, fix it, etc.
They striped it better. The paint that they bought was not good paint when they striped the parking lot, so Roger's got to get some better paint to stripe the parking lot with. The park, where we broke it to put the sewer line in, is repaired, looks nice. Did you notice that down there Jim? They did that.
They did do that, yes.
It looks real good. Everything that we did with the asphalt, half of the, they did half of Locust Street, sitting there waiting for it to be finished and do the other half.
Yeah, we did, with asphalt, we didn't do a whole bunch of little streets this year, but we just did a ton of little things that people are going to notice.
Little things that we needed to change right up and look for.
Mike said Cam Trail will be gone three days next week and said he's going to take a couple of boys down there to help him. He's going to four sidewalks around Sucker Valley and work for the boys on the inside. He said he'd be, Cam Trail will be gone in about three days, he said that's going to give us some time to.
In about three days, they could, they did a lot of work and.
Yeah, we'll have the concrete poured and.
Has anybody contacted Hope Monument?
Oh, for a racial sign?
They covered, White's and this one's up to the 10, I think, did they do that?
Do what?
They cover your new one's up to 10, do they?
Yes.
They may have.
Yeah, they got, they got.
Did they get the north side of it done?
I don't, I don't.
North side, the south side's done and the west side, east side's not done and I didn't drive around the front of it. Is it done Jim?
I thought east side was done.
No, east side's not.
No, Mike told me that, south and west.
Well, it looks nice. I'll tell you what those kids.
Oh, that's going to be well appreciated by the public, too. Well appreciated. I don't know how many people I've heard that think that's so much nicer than for the kids.
If we don't do things for the kids, the adults can go to hell. It's the way.
That's what the kids will say anyway. All right. I guess we're waiting on, Roger's our first, first up, right?
I raised hell with, with the guys that didn't have it coming. The gravel ones we replaced with asphalt, I told Ron Miller, he owes us money.
Roger, what time's the meeting start?
Right now. My, my, I'm sat right here, you start anytime we want to.
My driveway fell apart.
I called you, I said, hey, the boys are getting ready to leave town. Does everything suit you? And then I said, hey, call me, you never get called, so I'm assuming it suits you. They've had a good job, looks like, for these guys, every one of the bits.
Every one of those, every one of the driveways, I looked at every one of them actually they got through and every one of them. Those, those landowners ought to be damn proud to have what they got.
Yeah.
They did that. But every, every job that they did, they got it all done. Our department's nice and smooth, we got it back in shape. How much asphalt will it take to finish that up?
Finish.
Locust Street.
Oh, Larry, I kind of didn't know, Mike took care of that and I, I don't even know how much you put on every year for these boys.
Mike thinks it's going to be a little bit less than the tonnage we, we put on there.
I don't think, it's trying to take one of our homes to do that curb.
Seventeen thousand five hundred, I think is what I.
You know, I just, I had other stuff, I didn't have that length and I didn't, I didn't, you know.
So it seems he has five hundred gallons, but it might seem to think, or maybe it's eighteen five, but it might seem to think it'll come in a little bit less.
Do you want to go ahead and discuss that about that engineering out there in there or not?
Larry, Larry brought it up to me, some math, no, no, just thirty seconds, some math on the, how much we have in our fund, our transportation fund, and Larry thought the engineering might be something we might want to pursue again if we want to think about it, discuss it.
Engineering for what?
For phase two of the Locust Street project. Larry came to me, I didn't go.
And he didn't come to me, I just came to him wondering how much money exactly we had. Peter, he's got like, what will be well off?
Well, we don't know until we have the final, when we, when we join 32 Highway and the asphalt's done and Debbie's looked at all the bills, then we'll know. Because I think, I, I just can't believe that with what's left.
I couldn't either.
That there, because Mike says, I talked to him, and he says, outside the labor, the material is over half paid. I look at it and Wayne drives by it every day, it just seems to me like we're a long ways from being half done except for the, so. As far as transportation down, I think it has to be an open item until we're looked at it and then, and then do what, what we want to. After we see it, we look at it, we're done with it and says, here's the final bill, here's our income for it, and here's what we think maybe we're going to plan to spend out. It's a great fund, we're going to use it right.
I just couldn't believe how much we still got in it, it's a, I couldn't believe it. But I don't like, I don't know about the bills or nothing else.
Is, is the city building that sidewalk under, I mean, the school?
Yeah, and I'm a little bit worried about it. What they did today looks decent, but they got that rock in there and when, when they pour curbs, they got a little machine that packs that rock down in there so it's firm and I didn't see that they've done that.
Looks to me like it's a wonderful deal, so it's not going to work.
Well.
We paid a little bit, boys, I put, I talked to the mayor about it, I put sixty foot pipe and probably two little drop, so that's how much we got involved and I tore it out for them. So Dale came to me and said, hey, Roger, if you're tearing it out, the school will pull it back. And I said, I'll be there first thing in the morning.
Yeah, that's a cheap deal.
I mean, you know, it's a bit of a, the school entity.
And we are developing a really good relationship with the school and that phase two of the Locust Street project, they've talked about paying for half of that, so whatever, if, when and if we do get around to it, that's not all going to come out of our.
I recognize that. You know, that thing there, as far as anything out of transportation fund, there's a lot of things going to come out of it, but once we all to catch our breath, sit down, we look at it in November, December, after all the bills are paid, then we can start budgeting that transportation fund. I think that it's, or in my opinion, I think it's going to be a down low factor today because it's, it's, it's our job, we didn't bid it, we're paying for it by the hour, we're renting the equipment by the hour, so whenever we get through with the big track drill and things are back to normal, I think we're going to have good money in it.
I tend to agree with you, because when it's paid for, then you know how much money you've got left to go.
That's exactly right. And then start thinking about putting it in a budget, we'll make a new budget for it and spend it as we, as we see fit, as we can, for the things that come, that are allowed to be spent out of that transportation fund.
Hopefully learns right, not learns wrong, we'll do something that costs less.
And it would be nice if we were going to do the engineering, that we could just do all of it instead of just paying for engineering that we're not going to use, or we've ever created so much we had and do it.
Yeah, I, you know, we've got, we've got a project in, in the works right now that we, that came out of transportation fund, it was engineering on the walkway. We don't, you see, we, that's, that's something that we have more or less kind of committed to do because we pay for the engineering to do on it. We're looking at how much are we going to have to do and we will have to have, we've got such a mess with Hickory and Mill Street down there, trying to get it feasible where people can actually walk through there without breaking an ankle. I mean, we get, whenever, we get through it, it'll look, it'll look great, but I mean, those are things that we know we want to do and those are things that we may want to jerk out of the transportation fund somewhere down the line, it's going to be.
And our town hall meeting will give us a, a really good idea of what our, our citizens want. And then we'll, we'll have to budget, of course, for the, the new sales tax. And what I would like to do is, is come up with kind of a comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive plan of what we want to do and how we want to do it. And then consider the, the team working out there now, bringing them on as kind of a semi permanent team, as much as the new sales tax will last, and then kind of feed them one project after another and keep these things rolling.
I would like to know if it's feasible or if it's legal, that we, that if the state, if this county's highway bond becomes available to us and it's within what we think we want to pay for, then we pay for that out of the transportation fund.
Well, it would be transportation related in as much as it's for storing stuff that's used to repair.
Roger Steph, yeah. Roger Steph, and so it's a twofold deal and that means we need the building, we need to own it, we'll take care of it, but then it's going to be a major key to the walkway. If somebody buys that and we're in trouble and if we send three years in court trying to get an easement through there, it could be a long time because you don't know who's going to buy it. I mean, Wayne, I've heard Wayne Richard wants to buy it just to stop the walkway, but I, that's hearsay.
By the way, we had Roger came in to talk about, we might ought to talk about.
Let's get him out of here.
Roger, can you save us any money?
Yes, I mean, Wayne, I, you know, like the two, I've got down two trucks and I've already got, I mean, I've got one of them out of there.
You need what you got down here?
Well, no, I can do without, like the new backhoe, Wayne, I can, the salt bed's kind of iffy because the old, the new salt bed I got was eighty-five dollars, so it's getting terrible.
You're going to have, have it sometime, right?
I need it bad, I mean, because if we have a bad one in there and I got to really use it, we're probably that truck, with salt beds, I mean, big trucks. But, I mean, it's something I don't have to have. I mean, I, we'll just, you know, tackle it and try to work for what we got and buy goods we can, but, well, we've got to handle. You know, then a cutoff saw, I had to take one out there today, you know, I've got one more to put out almost and one's right close, so I need to buy a cutoff saw because we, we use them about every day. And the side cutter, I'd really like to have that side cutter and I've kind of got access to one at Green County. Jeff can, he probably, he knows more about it really than I do, but, more than the county had, or the Green County Road Bridge has and it's, you know, it's been really took care of, they've got records from day one on it, what's been done, what, you know, change oil, the whole nine yards. And I talked to that gentleman, Case, and he's kind of the one that got, got me on it and he's kind of in the middle of it. But I think that the side cutter, I'd really, I'd really like to have one because I can make everything look so much better and, and I can use it on all of my sewer lines, but I can use it all over town.
I don't tractor things.
Yeah, I tell you, I've been real lucky, we, we have, I hurt on the other truck.
Here's what the case manufacturing company is, what the case company is bringing out on the Bob White's representative. I know Roger, this, Roger put five thousand, but that's not the right figure.
Well, Debbie did, but I didn't give Debbie no figures, she can just put it in there. So that's my fault.
I don't have a clue.
Bob White thinks that we can buy this side cutter with a tractor, tractor and side cutter both for between fifteen and eighteen thousand dollars. Green County, he's involved, Case Equipment Company is involved with this particular item and Bob says that he can get it for us through a trade with Green County.
And what did that rig cost new?
Oh, the tractor alone costs seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And the side cutter, new side cutter would run as, a new side cutter, depending on if it's about eighteen foot side cutter, on a eighty horse tractor, that piece of equipment alone can very easily cost us thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars without the tractor. And you've got to have a horse, you've got to have a big tractor to handle it, to keep it from tipping over.
Is it more than we need?
Oh no, it's not a bit more than we need. Because here's her, here's the thing about the side cutter. The way we are now with what we have, the perfect example is Maple Street, our street, our easement. We can't hardly mow wide enough to get all of the weeds off of the land that the city owns. And as you know, we discussed that it's hard to fast, it's hard to enforce a weed ordinance if you can't cut your own weeds. But this one here will reach out about sixteen feet and it, it's not what Roger needs, we just need to see if we can get it bought. I mean, that's the thing.
Here's my question, if, if this thing is such a great deal, why didn't someone else pick up on it three months ago?
Well, because it's, has never turned, Green County's not turned it loose.
Okay.
It's not surplus, it's, it will be declared surplus material by Green County. Case Equipment Company has a deal to buy the, a lot of their surplus equipment, that's the deal they're on.
The flat urgency.
And why, and the guys from, from Case will let us have it, but will sell it to us because, well, the reason is, Case makes sure, if we went to buy a brand new backhoe for fifty-six thousand dollars, we don't have to bid it.
So this, and, and this is for, for right of way, so it's unequivocally transportation related?
Well, it's all, it's transportation.
So theoretically, the board could present a motion to spend up to twenty thousand dollars from the transportation fund to purchase that, should it become available.
Should it become. The thing that we, that Bob asked me again today, and he's talked, and he's talked to Roger about it, was, do you want it? Do you want me to try to get it for you? Well, we, we've never been, Roger's never been in a position, I've just been in a position to talk to him, said, yeah, if it, if it's within our price range, we want it. And I think that's what we need to do is to tell them, before it gets bought, Roger needs to go look at it, to physically look at it to make sure it's what we want and if it's, if it's not, then back off or go someplace else, but I think that.
But we might present a motion to allocate X amount to buy it.
If it's, if it's within, if it's what we want.
Well, if it's not what we want, then.
So Roger's not going to buy it anymore.
Right.
But I think if it's a way, I mean, we're talking budgets, Roger's got a piece of equipment out here that he's got within his budget, we're not going to make a decision because we're going to wait till all the budgets are getting in.
This is outside of the budget, this is transportation.
Yeah, this is transportation. So need to keep this in mind when we have another meeting to bring it. Roger, one other thing I'd like to ask, of, of your street and water department, on your budgets last year.
Uh huh.
Is there anything that you did last year, spent any money last year that you won't have to spend this year that you might want to cut out of it?
No, well, you know, Jeff, it's, it's kind of hard, it's, I mean, like my, you know, equipment and stuff, I mean, old used stuff, you don't, you don't know what you're spending on, you want to sell. But, I mean, for having a water line laid out and streets out, I've got none in fix. What I normally do after they make the budget, I, I, I get, start riding streets down and do the blacktop. And then I'll bring it to the units, that's council bidding, and then this will tell me how much that I can spend or how much I can tinker. That's the way I've done it in the past, but, I mean, I'll do it however, I mean, you know, I mean, I put oil lines in all over town, I can, I mean, I can do a lot of blacktop and, you know, just cordon, I just try to pick the roughest ones and try to get them taken care of with the money first.
Jeff, we need a budget, a motion on that tractor and everything?
Well, not, well, when we get to talking to Roger, I think maybe we'll talk about it again, but we need to go through Roger's, you know, to see, when you look at his, when you look at the expenditures for the street department and the water department and look at his wish list, because it's, you know, it's all labor intensive, the entire street and water department, that's just labor out and material.
And we've got to rely a lot on luck, too. What's going to break down at any given time. If stuff starts breaking down and we're having a hard time keeping the teams running, then we're in trouble.
Is there, I see a propane barrel that's about thirty-three hundred seven a big shot.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Well, there may be some more than two, I ain't sure, you know, but I think probably just there at the shop.
You need weed eaters?
Yes, I'm, I'm good, I mean, I, I thought if we could put them in the budget and I didn't need them, I wouldn't have to buy them, then I could pack that money over, but if something happened, we broke down with a couple, I'd need to buy a couple.
Please try and.
A cutoff saw, I have one cutoff saw.
You should.
I'll have to buy one of them, I'm sure.
How much is this?
Uh, approximately, oh, a thousand eleven, something like that, eleven hundred. It's just a handheld, a handheld, thousand or probably not over twelve thou, or, yeah, twelve hundred, I'm sorry. I'm not saying twelve thousand, I meant probably twelve hundred, not no more than that.
Is this like a saw as well?
Well, it's, it's with the round blades, you can get concrete blades, metal blades, yeah, yeah, they're just like a big chainsaw.
So all of these department head requests, Debbie, are they in addition to what you have budgeted here already?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I'd like to get Jennifer needs a water, little water truck back, because her, open the door and the door almost falls off. And we've worked on it and had it to the groggers and it just, it's just almost beyond fixing. I mean, it ain't something we can't live with, if we ain't got the money, yeah, I know we ain't got the money, but if we could squeeze her, even a good used truck, but she wants a little pickup, we, you know, we have them alleys and stuff on two of them, and she'd like to have four wheel drive, if, if we can find one fine enough to get, I guess, she's made all this time of what she's got, so we can, you know, continue on, but I don't know what something like that has to cost now, you know, but it is useful.
Bobby's truck, four wheel drive?
No.
No, I'm the only one that got four wheel drive and winter time we've got to haul, take guests to the lift stations and everything, you know, I mean, we need a couple four wheel drives if we can get it.
Could use the Archie Star?
Yeah, he could haul, he could haul some of them around, I mean, that's what I do with the four wheel drive pickup.
That Durango's four wheel drive?
Huh?
That Durango's four wheel drive?
Yeah.
You've got a hundred dollars for travel and meetings, that'll never put you in a hot home in Vegas.
I know, I know, boy. Debbie just throws money in there because she's earned.
Well, every, they pay the difference on the CDL drivers between their regular license and their CDL, so everybody's doesn't expire the same year, but every once in a while, I think it's like maybe sixteen dollars they get reimbursed for. We have to have a little money in there to pay that every couple of years when somebody's license renews.
Did Darryl, this is Jeff's question, did Darryl pass his CDL and everything?
Yeah, read that.
Okay. He'll be ready for another round of water, that's when you're presented, Marty.
Uh, he's got at least two years, I think it is.
Yeah, but we're going to.
Am I wrong on that, he misses it every year?
We'll send him to classes, though.
I can go pull his file because him and I had a discussion.
No, I don't need to know that. Keep him current.
The side cutter, if we can get one, weed eaters or, I mean, these are things we can, we can do locally as a piece of, he doesn't have a budget on that thing, he doesn't move very fast. He's got some horse vehicles.
Are you going to still service all the vehicles down there now?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I'd say.
Well, I think, you know, I felt like. Well, I think, you know, boy, I felt like the, the city was paying for getting them done, and it wasn't happening, they wasn't taking care of them. And, you know, transmission, it costs four thousand. You know, and then just cause somebody did a check for transmission.
So, all of this in the general?
You know, four thousand dollars, and I mean, they have it funny, but we could use that four thousand dollars on sidewalks or on streets, you know what I'm saying?
So, we're drawing in, this is just the budget, the general, we have an interest that we ran, seventy thousand two hundred five dollars on something.
And it's on the bonds, it's on the bond, I mean, we have, we have all the bonds.
Okay, so then, on the carryover that we have there on here, what's the balance? It goes somewhere, it's not just...
It goes in regular checking accounts.
So what do we have in our checking account, once in a while? Can't we dip into the regular checking account and buy?
No, no, no.
We can't, why not?
Because if it's so designated for a designated bond issue, you can't spend the money.
Well, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about out of the general fund, I mean, because if we have a carryover...
It is held on checking account.
Okay, but the funds are allocated for different things, so we should have some kind of a balance of what we have in the checking account minus the money we can't spend. Okay, so can you tell us that, Debbie, what the bank balance is?
I can tell you what the balance was when I started budget, which is where the carryover figure comes from. In the general fund, the day that I started budget, July twenty-fourth, there was two hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Sales tax and other revenue that was supposed to be coming in equaled two hundred and fifteen thousand for the rest of the fiscal year. The expenses going out equaled two hundred and forty-two thousand projected, so a balance of two oh four, two twenty-five was projected as carryover.
Anything we have to spend?
Roger, on yours, you cut off one percent. That cuts your...
Do you want the numbers for water and sewer, Christie? Because I have those on here, too.
Yeah, I understand, I just got the truck that Dog had, we got it, the truck that Dog had, we just wanted, I mean, you've got that line up where I did it for.
Have you got it yet?
No, that's not yet.
We gotta, we gotta pay for it, that'll be on...
Take it out of your checking account. Really, we should get rid of that?
Child support student loans.
That child support?
Are we done with Roger?
You know what, why shall I say this?
Yeah, I've got one, I'll mention one more thing, then I'll, I'll shut up. The, the longboards, this is, the warranty will go out the first of October. And I could probably make it another year, maybe two years with them, but if you wanna keep them under warranty, we gotta trade this year. But that's up to the mayor and the county. I mean, we ain't used them the last six weeks for enough, we ain't got, we ain't had nothing to mow, but, uh, I, I just wanted you to all know that the warranty is gonna go out on them.
Are we gonna get any value for them, trading them in?
Well, we can get pretty good lick on them, you know, 'cause I, I, I make the boys wore some memory weeds, clean them and grease them and truck blades every Friday.
Let's see what kinda, we have two, two riders, two of them?
Two John Deere front, you know, zero turn.
Let's see what kinda deals you can get for us, and what, what trade value and be able to bring that to the board on the thirteenth.
Well, I'll just get like John Deere, that's before we bought them, and I'll just get him to come and look at them, and then bid me two new ones. And then, if you want me to get new ones, then we can take bits from the rest of them, or whatever.
Here's the thing that we've got with the John Deere, if one of them breaks down, they're here the next day giving us one.
To like that R six.
Swap one out there, we've always got one. We've tried going other places and having repair and have, have us down with one tractor for two months and trying to keep caught up. That's the advantage, that's what Roger's always liked about the John Deere is that they...
Well, yeah, I can break down, like I could say this morning I had one to break down, if I call them immediately, then normally by noon or after they leave me one off and take that in that, that larger? Yes.
And that's, that's, that's the warranty, that's, that's, I have...
I mean, their warranty's been super, I mean...
Is it three-year warranty?
Two-year, we give a two-year warranty on them. And, and the future, the council bought me one every, bought me two every two years, you know, and, you know, they're just soft. I mean, the boys, that, them both people really takes the best care of, and it's hard, you know, not to stay with John Deere, if you got something good, it's, it's worth good for the city, 'cause they're at zero dollars.
Do they have an hour meter on them?
Yeah.
How many hours?
Wait, I just have to look, I, I, you know, I don't know where I'll stop with it.
If, if you find out what, what value we'll get for them and what, you know, what, what it's gonna cost us to get a new similar, and, and bring that to the board, we'll, we'll consider it.
Yeah, I'll get Mike to look in and, you know, go there, and I, I got, this is a proposition, you know. Do I, do I get a keep Tom at the end of?
We're, we're gonna try and figure that out.
I'd like to sure keep him, boy, he's, he's a worker, and he's a good one.
And I, and I appreciate him, every time I see him, he says, uh, you know, thank you for hiring me, thank you for hiring me.
He's a good feller.
Good guy.
I mean, I ain't had a whole door in, in here.
Yeah.
He's a likable guy, he can work with anybody, and, you know, you just don't worry about it, good help every day.
Yeah, I, I think he'd be a great asset in the city, so I'd, I'd like to figure out how to keep him on, I'd like to keep them through and keep them moving.
I like to, I mean, you know, I know, I know, but Greg, that boy that worked with him is good, too. I mean...
Greg's so...
Yeah, I mean, you gotta tell him yourself, but, you say, did a ditch here, I have some new parts here, good ones, he'll go deep, he won't look up and get it up. You know, he's just that way. That's all I've got for us, that's all we can use wrong.
Thank you, Roger.
That wasn't bad from this day of, see you.
I know, listen, you take, this is our audit, this is our fund balance as of September thirtieth, twenty-eleven, add that to the bank balance net. This started, so you would take five hundred and thirty-two thousand every day to the bank net, plus done. Add everything we brought in this year, and then subtract what we spent this year, shouldn't be adding how much we have in the bank.
You can't add that carryover in there.
You can't put the carryover in there.
It says as of, so why can't you put the carryover in there?
Because that's the fund balance.
What does that mean?
You're wanting to add the carryover to the carryover.
Okay, so, as of September thirtieth, twenty-eleven, it's, the audit says we had a certain amount. Can you take that amount and add in everything that we've brought in, and then subtract everything that we spent out, and that's what we come up with, the total, two hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars?
If you don't use that carryover number, yes, that's what we come up with.
You didn't have to move, you can sit next to Gus unless there's other reasons you moved away from Gus.
Gotta stay away from Gus.
Perfectly understandable. I know, go, go through the budget here, you're a little high on supplies and materials, you're ninety-two percent. Uh, can you explain why real quick?
The most expensive thing we do is, is the medical, and, and that, everything that we buy comes out of the, the supply account, and the most expensive thing we do is the medical.
Okay.
And that is something we can't control the prices, you know, our vet gives it at cost, it's constantly rising.
Is it one of those things that some years we get lucky and don't have a lot, and other years it was bad? Or is it fairly constant and just rising?
Fairly constant, yes, it is fairly constant.
Okay, and I noticed it was budgeted for nine thousand, uh, last year, or this year, next year, it goes up to ninety-five hundred, so that was a problem. Anything that, that you could see of cutting?
The only thing that I, I really want is the, the camel system, um, the rest of it.
Debbie, that's budgeted for, is that correct?
No.
It's not? Okay.
That came up after July twenty-fourth, so...
Oh, okay. And, and how much is that gonna be?
It's on that capital wish list.
But we already approved that.
Yeah, we did, but I, it was under the impression that we had to renegotiate that at this time.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was approved, I guess, for the, I guess, the two months remaining of the fiscal year.
Yes, that was my understanding.
But it wasn't added into, into new budgets.
I had done this before I went on vacation, you all approved that the week that I was on vacation. So that's why it went on this list when I got back.
So, when we do the, when we do the final budget and play with it...
We'll need to add sixteen thousand forty-five dollars.
Back into something we've already committed to do, basically, is that, did we just commit to two months?
No, we committed to hire someone.
Well, no, I mean, it's at-will employment, that is my understanding, we committed to two months, with the understanding that it was gonna be an ongoing need. And, and we talked about putting in the budget.
We waited, we were gonna wait till we got the budget done before we finalized, is that right?
Oh, no, it's finalized, person's been hired, is that correct?
Yes.
And they're working for us.
Yes.
And I guess we're no, under no obligation to keep them, they're just not...
The figures aren't in the budget.
Budgeted in, in this budget. So it'd be a matter of adding another sixteen thousand.
How is the assistant, how's, how's she working out for you?
She is absolutely fantastic, you could not, I don't know if you know her, it's Laura Merritt, and she worked ten years at Superior Gearbox, and she, you can tell her what need, and she just, she's a self-starter, she's a self-motivator, and she is attention to detail, she's fantastic. And all the years I've been with this and different people who've worked, she is by far head and shoulders above anybody that's ever worked down there.
She was a Steinbeck.
I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, now, this, what you're asking for, it's a sixteen thousand for thirty hours a week.
Yes, it's six hours a day, five days.
Did we, did we, when we hired her, what, what was, what were we gonna do about the fringe benefits?
I don't know, it would be a, I don't think she qualifies for...
For thirty hours, she doesn't qualify, is that right?
Yeah, oh, I thought she was, is she working thirty hours?
Yes.
Um, so after she's been here a certain amount of time, she would qualify for insurance if you didn't change the ordinance, but it would be a partial pay, I believe. Let me grab the ordinance.
I was trying to recall, because I thought there was something discussed about that when we hired her. She's worked for thirty days, is that right, about?
I think it's been at least two weeks, maybe three, it was the last council.
Last regular council?
Yes.
Two weeks for sure, if there's something we need to, when we look at the big budget, let's see.
She went in for the, the drug testing?
Yes.
And she tested, uh, queen for cat, that right?
Yes.
About what's the health insurance, Debbie, can you tell us about?
Well, it's, it's a weird thing the way that it's in there, so I was trying to figure, she would have to work a hundred and forty weeks before she's eligible for the insurance at half price, the way the ordinance is now. So, it's not something you have to consider in this budget year.
Okay, so all we have to consider is doing our, after we hit ready, do that, you know?
Yes.
Is there any way we can keep from getting all these dogs? No, we can't do that, you can't do it, it gets lost, it puts you tail.
Start paying Roger five dollars a piece for catching them again, Jeff.
He'll be bringing them in from Levee mine there, like, say, five dollars a piece. Gus has got a bunch of them, Dennis, you just don't know about it.
What's that mean?
I said, you've got a bunch of dogs, Dennis, you just don't know about. The vet bill is the largest single item we have.
Yes.
You get the...
Who do we use?
Dr. Wade.
You do use Rusty?
Yes.
You get some donations, don't you?
As far as the, on the medical, on the animals?
Well, like the vet bills and...
He, he, as far as, he gives us, you know, at cost, a lot of things.
You have individuals donating to the city town?
They're actually donating to the rescue, and the rescue pays for the surgeries and the rabies shots and everything that's on the animal seeker.
So that's, that's outside of this?
Yes, yes.
What's, okay, you can tell the board the value the city gets from, from HFL?
Well, uh, just some small things that we might weekly say is, uh, you know, I know this sounds crazy, but we'd be thirty-five loads of laundry a week at, at a minimum, and, and the, the, the group provides the washer, the dryer, the laundry, the bleach, the, anything that you need, 'cause you're constantly washing laundry and bedding. Uh, they provide the food, both the dog and cat food, and that's right at three thousand dollars a year. And, uh, they provide all the cat litter, and that's about eighteen hundred dollars a year. Just, just something that, you know, weekly, it's fifty-six dollars a week for food and thirty-three dollars a week for litter. And, uh, then, you know, all of the, uh, like you say, the costs for preparing them for adoption, we're on, the city's on the front end of it. And, and you have to understand, we're governed by the Department of Ag, and because of the Proposition B, it has created quite a nightmare for shelters, rescues, towns, uh, you know, there, that's, that's quite a controversial issue. And we've seen the Department of Ag go from, uh, a fairly lenient status towards facilities to a very, very restrictive thing. So we, we have to comply with, you know, the rules in the Animal Care Facilities Act, and we have to try, we're, we're meeting just minimum standards on our facility. But it is very intense now, and, and very costly. And that is, I feel, is a result of Proposition B, the breeders are pushing back. They want, they want the towns and shelters and rescues to be as much accountable as they are.
Anything you see you could cut?
Well, I, I, like you say, the only thing I would be interested in is, is the camel system, the rest of it is, is stuff that I just presented. Things that would be good that we could do, uh, upgrading the building would be a positive thing. And the truck, you know, I've taken really good care of the truck, it's, uh, about thirteen years old, and, uh, there's some minor battery repair, that's all reason I brought it up. It's got a little bit of rust here, and the truck's in good condition.
We rebuilt the engine on it?
Yes.
Still running, running good?
Runs very good, yeah, the truck's the best it's ever been, you know, it used, uh, for years it used, uh, quartal oil every week. It does not, the, the, absolutely. The only thing I truly, really want is the camel system.
All right, any questions, really?
Yes, is there any way we can stop that wastewater and work through that thing?
Sure, we can divert it in the field right next door, just don't worry about it anymore. And I'm, I'm gonna ask Debbie a handful of questions. A lot of Gus's money flows through the Water and Sewer Fund, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and, and can you explain to us real quick how that's different?
The Water and Sewer Fund is supposed to operate like a business.
Okay.
So, the revenues that you bring in, and a reserve is necessary... So the revenues that you bring in, and a reserve is necessary, and Roger and Gus can both tell you why is a reserve necessary. Gus?
Because we get a lot of surprises and stuff that breaks in that we don't count on.
Yeah.
If we don't have the reserve, we'll be in trouble really fast.
And and those are, those are the calls I get all the time, and it's almost like a broken record. Gus will call and say, Andrew, something is, is defunct, and we need to do this, that, and the other. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I approve everything they want because, well, this is plain necessary to keep things going. And there was something I meant to ask you about it. Darrell called me and was, needed parts, and was getting something fixed. And he wanted to replace, I guess, some kind of sensor.
Flow meter.
Yeah, and but there was a sensor in there, and it was twelve hundred dollars, and I said, hold off on that for now.
That's on well, too.
Do we, do we need to do that? And I, I meant to bring that before the board to get their consensus on.
The only reason that I was wanting to do it is, and I told him to do that.
Okay.
Uh, was because we're replacing all the plumbing in that well. The only thing that will be original is that meter. So I just thought we would do the meter at the same time. As far as I know, it's never been replaced.
Is jet well one, well two?
Yes, sir.
And Darrell said it was still working, but he didn't know how the, the data coming from it, how accurate that was.
Yeah, there's no way to test them. The only way to test them is against another meter.
Okay.
And then all we can do that is replace it. So it's a simple turbine meter that just fits right in the line. And I'm not going to tell you it's inaccurate because I do not know. But it just seems like to me that if we're going to replace everything in there, do it too while we're at it.
Could, could we take it, send it in for testing?
I've never tried that. I can find out, but even at that, we don't know how much water we're gonna be pumping.
Yeah, I, I hate to, I hate to pay twelve hundred dollars to replace something.
It can be fine. It's not unlikely. It could very well be fine, and we don't need to replace it. And that's just a decision that you guys need to make.
How hard to change, if you leave it?
Thirty, forty minutes.
I have a quick question for you. Uh, water tower one, what's the water capacity there?
I don't remember right off the top of my head.
Which is number one? First one we asked.
Right down here?
Yeah. Is that seventy-five thousand gallons?
I was gonna say seventy.
Yeah, that seems right.
What, what percentage of our total water stores do you think that one holds?
For number one?
Yeah. Because two and three are quite a bit bigger.
Yeah, three is, uh, like two hundred thousand, and four is, uh, four hundred something. It's probably less than twenty percent, right at twenty percent. I can get you accurate figures.
Are we under an obligation from one of these federal departments or state to have so much water reserved at all times?
Yes, sir, you gotta have a certain amount on hand.
You have to know what, how much that is.
No, sir, we're not gonna find out.
I would appreciate that, that number, the gallons. I would appreciate, uh, knowing exactly what the three towers hold.
I'll have.
I'd like to know that.
Yeah, I should know, but.
I'll, I'll let the board in on kind of what I'm thinking. I, I saw a newspaper article, or a news story or something, and, and they were, uh, the city of Warsaw had an old ugly tower like our number one, and they were simply just taking it down, selling it for scrap metal. And and I got thinking, next year, we're gonna do the analysis of one. And, uh, if it holds very little water, and it's not necessary, and it ends up, we need to spend two hundred thousand dollars on it, uh, it may be better just to sell it for scrap metal than to throw good money out for bad, but we don't know.
We don't know.
It's just an idea.
It's a great idea.
May, maybe a crappy idea, but we'll find out as the, the data comes in, and I just.
But you know, that's how good, good cities operate is to have good ideas in case, and they're all not all great, but we have to have ideas.
So, I mean, that's something to, to, to put out there. We may just take it out, sell it for scrap metal if it's gonna.
And we may repaint it, too.
Yeah, it may, it may cost a little bit of paint, and we're good, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Can you paint it, Gus? You can paint it.
You bet. I'll look around, maybe we'll have at it. Maybe just give me some information here on the wells, but it doesn't. It doesn't have the actual, how much they hold. Oh, yeah, it does. Tower number one has seventy-five thousand gallons. Thank you. Tower number two has two hundred thousand gallons, and tower number three has four hundred thousand gallons. And four was the reason, uh, uh, number three, the fear comes to mind of three hundred thousand gallons is what we have got to have on hand.
That's the reason we built the four hundred one.
Right.
That was the reason we built the three.
Right, so if everything cramped out, four could handle it, or number three could handle the city. That was why it was put in.
Debbie, do you know, just offhand, just to guess, what number three cost us? From, from well to tank?
I don't remember if it was eight hundred and seventy-five or if it was one million, um, because we were using some of our own money, and I figured it up for you that day. I can look for you.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
I thought it was.
It was, yeah, it was either one, those two numbers are coming in.
So, so number one holds about twelve percent of our water.
Right.
But it's a status symbol, so. I'm sorry.
All right. Anything you can't live without?
Yeah, uh, I went really, uh, back and forth on this one quite a bit. The distiller for ammonia testing. Uh, David asked me if he could put that into the budget. I told him, yeah. I figured it up. Uh, we send a test once a month to, uh, CASI in Springfield to have it done. If we bought that, it would take us six years to pay it back by sending the sample that we do to Springfield.
Take how long?
Six years. So, in my opinion, we could just do away with it. I don't think we really need it that bad.
The accuracy from what we get is maybe better than we could do ourselves, too, Gus?
Oh, yeah.
We're sensitive to make mistakes, and they're not.
They're certified. We're not.
Now, one more time, what, what is it?
It's a, uh, the distiller for ammonia testing, uh, two thousand fifty-three dollars. I figured out it would take us, because we send the test to Springfield once a month, to the CASI, the lab down there, it would take us six years to pay it back by not sending it to CASI.
If, if we bought one.
Yeah, we could go six years for the same amount of money that we're putting into that distiller. That's what I'm saying.
So you're wanting to buy the distiller?
No, I don't wanna buy the distiller.
No, he doesn't.
Oh, you wanna get rid of, oh, okay, that's something on your wish list. You know longer wish to have.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need it that bad.
Okay.
Gus, what about the use of the truck? And I assume this is the sleds truck?
Uh, no, that's the, to replace, uh, one of our other trucks, the blue truck, or the brown truck, or the white car. Uh, I just wanted, I just wanted a new vehicle or a better vehicle.
For yourself.
Uh, for the treatment.
The treatment, yeah. The door, you want one that doors may stay on, or can you take one?
It'd be sweet, if we could do that. My feet don't drag on the ground when we drive around, it'd be even better.
Does the blue truck go now?
Yeah, and the old brownie's gonna have to go in and get repaired. It's, it's gonna wear, won't hardly run. So the only really good vehicle I got's the cop car, and that's it.
We told John, now give it to him, man. Do you, uh, do you need a, a pickup truck, Gus?
Yes.
You need for, for a plant operation itself?
Yes. And we need.
Can you get by, do you need a four-wheel ride, or can you get by without four?
No, I need a four-wheel ride.
Do you currently have a four-wheel ride?
No.
Why, why do you need a four-wheel ride?
Well, dead winter, when you got twelve, thirteen inches of snow on the ground, try to make it down to the station number one.
How much does he take you out, too?
Well, he's been taking us all the time because we used to hike all the way down into those fields, you know, and we need to.
Oh, we're getting old.
I'm getting old. Don't wanna do it anymore, so.
You don't have the internet now.
No.
What would it be useful?
It would give us access to, like, DNR, EPA, and if there's pieces of equipment we need that we can't find, we can get on the computer and look it up, find, find something works at. And it would help us on our meeting process a lot to get the internet.
What about turning in forms and stuff? Can you do that?
Yeah, we can.
Electronically?
Yeah, we can just send it right to them.
Probably kidding. You can get.
Yeah, you can get it cheaper than six hundred and five, if we decide.
Our internet lessons.
That's about six hundred a year, wasn't it?
Yeah, six hundred a year.
Haven't you got one in your back room?
Uh, yeah.
That we could use?
A computer?
Yeah. Well, why don't you donate one to, and get it, and get that hazardous thing out of your back room if your EPA gets you. I'm sure Ox might send a ground source that we could sure.
Well, we got a computer. We need internet, yet.
There's no, I don't think there's a computer.
There's a computer.
No, we, we have one computer in the lab. And what I wanna do is, in the new office building, I'm gonna make one of the offices there strictly for the water department. So I wanna move that computer into there and put a new one in the lab, and then get them both hooked up on internet.
So the internet costs us what? Two, three hundred dollars a year.
Six hundred is.
That's what that is, the cost is. The cost of all the other departments is about two ninety-seven. But you do need an internet. And you need a truck.
Yes, sir. I would like to have a truck. We can make old blue last a while longer, but it would be nice to have a new truck.
Could we spend our bond money for a truck?
No.
Except for you guys.
Debbie, was under the law can we spend our bond money for a truck?
I'd just have to ask DNR. It's not really our choice. It would be DNR's decision. If that's something you want me to do, um.
I don't know, we, we're gonna, we got, Debbie, how much is left in our bond? Four hundred or six hundred thousand?
Oh, no, there's not that much.
No.
Um.
Three, three hundred and sixty?
I, I don't remember. I'd have to go look and then figure out how much that camera cost, because we haven't got it yet, but it's been allocated. Do you want me to go look?
No, no.
No, it's not a big deal.
Because we, we still have that inflow problem, integration problem, but we got it.
But I'd kinda like to look. Do we have to request, request, Debbie, to DNR to spend any of that money outside of bond retirement?
No, yeah, we have, that, that money that's left from that bond issue, we have to have DNR's permission to do, spend it on anything.
On anything?
Yes, because it's a subsidized interest. They control it.
That's right. Federal government subsidize that, doesn't it?
Yes, through D, the federal government subsidizes it through DNR.
Right, okay.
They're the pass-through entity that makes the decision.
Basically, full control over that.
Yes, I had to jump through a bunch of hoops just to get the camera system approved before we could purchase it, so.
Do we have it yet, or is it?
I don't believe so. It's been ordered, and it's been approved, and I've got the documentation from DNR showing it's approved, but.
Supposed to be here middle of September.
Okay, and then we can start using it.
We're gonna go right and work with it.
Right during the rainy season.
Absolutely.
Probably good thing, at least we'll see where it's coming. All right.
Uh, let me ask you, Gus, on our sludge operation, you spread it all yourself, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on, on the field to the north?
Yes, sir.
Has that ever been considered to sell it?
No, we've never, we've never sold it. Never bothered about selling it.
Well, I know some cities get paid to put it on various farms.
Yeah, uh, most, a lot of your major cities do, uh, but a lot of these guys around here know, and we've got to get rid of it. And so they make their land available for us to use, and, you know, if you start charging them for it, they just won't do it, so.
We're just lucky to have a place to put it.
Right next door.
Our sled truck's on its last leg, hasn't it?
Yeah, it is, but, uh, I didn't want, I was gonna put that in for next year's budget. We're gonna have to replace that truck if you think it's gonna lay down and die. It's twenty, twenty-two years old.
How big a, how big a truck is that?
It's sixteen hundred gallon tank.
How big's the chassis? Two-ton, huh, two-ton?
Yeah.
Two-ton?
And we, we ran that thing to death.
Is the, is the, the tank, can it be put on a different truck, or?
Yeah.
So what we need to be looking for.
Is chassis?
Is a good, huge, two-ton truck somewhere down the line that comes to us at sale, you know?
We put it on a blue. Mash it flat, bro.
Yeah, some of these auctions sometimes, those things become available, and if they're not, you know, new trucks are expensive, too, too expensive to buy, but a good used truck, just kinda keep it in the back of the mind, or always on the lookout for some of that stuff. And we need to be on the lookout for several vehicles. Make them after, put on the wall, how many trucks we need, and get ready to do the budget.
Oprah, maybe Oprah will come down.
Gus, what can you do to make the recycling self-sustainable?
Uh, you mean make it stand on its own without us having to deal with it? I need another man in there.
What do we recycle?
Uh, cardboard, plastics, uh.
Paper.
Tin cans.
Paper, tin cans, aluminum cans. Uh, we do newspaper, and office paper, and shredded paper.
And then we sell it.
The books, hard bags, soft bags.
And we have to take it down there.
No, they come again.
They come and get it.
I buy cardboard with ton. I model it up down here.
It seems to me like there ought to be some way to make that self-sustainable. I mean, in my simple mind, you've got the big bins out there, and you want to put it in there, put it in there.
Or at least, maybe there's grants. I mean, how, we've, we've got a liberal in the White House. You think there'd be grants for recycling?
Well, they, they bail, they bail the cardboard and the shredded paper and the plastic.
You wouldn't want a customer, or just anybody coming in and throwing their stuff in the bay.
And you have to watch where they put everything. I used to work at recycling, and you know, the public, they'll just set stuff.
Yeah, but.
Take your sound.
Lot of garbage.
Throw their garbage in there.
You need twenty more.
I have to show up, probably.
And you know.
Shotgun on your wish list, a little bit, stop that.
Wait.
By golly, I'll do.
How do, you know, where do you get all of this? Where do you get your plastics and your cardboards and your paper?
From the city and the county. Yeah, if one thing you guys gotta realize is the most popular thing in Buffalo is that recycling center.
I think lots of stuff down there. I'm not trying to get away from them. I'm just trying to figure out.
Oh, it comes from everywhere. I've, I've had people come all the way from Oliver and put stuff in that recycling center.
To donate it to us, or just give it to us.
Yeah. Years ago, when I was with the recycling center, uh, we did a, you know, we kept a log, and it was much more popular with the county than it was the city at that time because of the trash pickup availability. That's different.
The more that we get, the more chance we've got to make it a self-sustaining business? Or do you have, I mean, we don't get enough to make it pay for itself. Is that right?
Um, no, I, I think the best is a birdie.
It's potential, though. I mean, if you had somebody that had managed it, that could keep an eye on what the prices are, and, I mean, buy more stuff, buy copper, buy batteries, buy things that we can then resell to some of the larger recycling centers, then we could possibly even make money, because it seems like there's a recycling center on the corner. I went to Oliver, and there's a new one opened up, or no, not Oliver, I'm sorry, halfway. There's a new one opened up in halfway. And I know that we want metals, but, I mean, if we could.
In the world, if you don't recycle, you can invest in. It is what it is. We just have to see what we can do. I mean, how?
But you wanna buy, we wanna sell direct. You don't wanna sell to these smaller organizations, because you're gonna get a lot of those profits, because they've got to get their cut.
Yeah.
That's why we sell directly to customers, maybe, or.
And.
American recycling.
They probably take those other things as well, not, I mean, copper, batteries, I don't know.
We've never approached them about it. We've never approached them about it.
You never have?
Never have.
Some of it is the handling of it. It's the reason, you know, the city kinda streamlined in the early days what it took, because of what it takes to handle this stuff.
And I know we don't take glass.
Yeah, that is a very difficult thing to handle.
The big moneymaker is cardboard. We, we make money on cardboard and the shredded papers worth quite a bit. Uh, the plastics is not so much, but, I mean, it still brings in money.
We don't sort plastics now.
No, we used to, but I called and asked them about it, and they said, just send it down. They didn't hear. It was like five cents cheaper to just send it all mixed, so that's what we do. Just keep moving.
From a marketing standpoint, uh, most banks, or all the banks, spray their own paper now. Uh, do we get any of that, or does that just go in their trash paper?
Kristy can answer that.
We get, uh, we get all of the trash from the, um, post office. We get some cardboard from US Bank, but I, they don't send any of their shred. I've never picked up any there, but it would be a good thing that we could market it. We could ask the banks if they were throwing in their dumpster, if we could have their trash.
We used to get O'Bannon Bank.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes.
Also US Bank.
And I know we get from nine-one-one, and then Edward Jones and the police department.
Well, I mean, if we, if we pick up the banks, it looks to me like that would, if we had a, if you had a decent truck to, to pick this up in, could you pick it up on a regular basis?
Well, we used to all the time.
You just need a piece of equipment to go did it with.
That's what the old Ford truck was used for. That's what the old Ford truck down there was used for. They picked that out, they picked it up.
Looks to me like we're gonna try to make it profitable. We need to think about the long term, and maybe get a piece of it.
I kinda like the Sanford and Son kinda appeal.
Yeah, I know what you said. Wheels is what you need, more than anything else.
Yes, sir.
You can get by without the employees.
I'd really like to have a new employee, and, uh, the problem that I have is, you know, we just took over the water, and we're doing the wells, and we're doing the, the powers, taking care of that, plus all the treatment work in. Uh, it's been really hard to adjust to hauling the sludge, because we're just so oversized now since Penn Gene Lab. But we're gonna have to start hauling sludge, and there's just not enough to be to go around and do everything. And with the lift stations as old as they are, they're starting to break down quite a bit, which I'm sure you guys are aware of, because you see the builds. You know, I, I just need another man to help out.
You can use Roger's guys quite a bit, though, can't you?
I do now, yeah.
So do I understand, Debbie, that the wastewater is a business of its own?
The wastewater and the water fund are their own business, separate from all the other operations of the city.
So it's a, it's a.
It's what they call an enterprise fund.
Right, it's an enterprise. It's, it's a profit-loss situation, assets and liabilities. So I guess we just have to kind of balance that and look at the potential we'll hit for the year and see how much of a loss we can stand.
Yeah, um, I'll give up the guile for recycling that I asked for, but I'd really like.
How is that, how, uh, jump off of this budget for a minute? Uh, have you got that situation handled that was a problem?
So far, he's doing very well. And, uh, but I did, I really read him the riot act the next day, and, uh, that gave him no wiggle room, and he stepped up to the plate. I'll, I'll admit he did.
Okay.
Hopefully, he'll stay that way.
Alright, so we just gotta look to see if we can make enough money out of it to buy this equipment.
That old truck, how many was your age? That Ford pickup?
So it's really safe.
What's, what's his problem?
It won't, it dies constantly. And, uh.
What's the Ford, but his bag?
Great, my girl.
Oh, come on, you know?
Yeah, they're, I'm talking about, about my Ford, it's, you know.
Ain't much room in that truck.
Richard probably get it.
I guess until it worked on him.
Last time we took it, we took it to Richard, and he kinda washed his hands of it, 'cause things been coughing together so much, it's hard to figure out what's wrong with it.
How old is it?
Oh, Mike, I think it's Noah and Roland, when he first came over. Noah and Roland.
Nineteen eighty-four.
Is that what it is?
Yep.
Uh, okay, I do need to bring one thing to your guys' attention. Uh, we bought that new air conditioner down at the treatment plant, the window unit, we broke it.
It's guaranteed for a year, got a warning on it.
Not if you run a drill through the core.
Oh, gosh.
Uh, we, it filled up with water, so they all decided to drain it, and we took the frame and pulled it back, and we were drilling a drill up underneath, and we still got the core.
I'm glad to hear that. I didn't want to thank God, 'cause I only did it in the world, 'cause I did all the mining. I started drilling and draining the water out, and it did some right here to the core.
And we were so close, too, but.
If you're patient, it'll rust out, and you don't have to drill a hole. How much, how much is the new one?
Three hundred dollars. Now, that's from where they got it, which apparently is different from Walmart.
Kind of Chatham's.
Is that where it was?
Come from Chatham's.
Okay, but, uh, I know Walmart's cheaper, but we have to wait to get it, 'cause they don't have a good spot for it. Check Sam's, and I'll, I'll sign a purchase order unless anyone wants to ring my neck for it.
No, not a, a building down there, they need something.
Yeah, we, we gotta have something, just for the chemicals in there. Check, check Sam's, and, uh.
We couldn't turn the dogs loose in there, let them circulate the air running around?
Different department.
No, if that won't work, man.
Can't make sense.
Cabs are done in there.
Wouldn't be such a problem if you weren't full of pot here. That's funny.
Gus and I are on a roll here.
Yeah. Alright, guys, we'll take care of things as far as that concern. We'll take everything into consideration, see what the bottom line looks like.
Any, any further questions? Can these fine folks be excused?
I'm very nice.
Thank you very much. Kristy, have a talk with some guys, see if you can make those comments.
I would win.
Well, well, well.
Do we wanna talk briefly, I guess, uh, about Monday's meeting, and, and I give you my quick thoughts. Parks Department, leave it as it is. Uh, they shouldn't need anything new. Police Department, I don't think we really need to get them anything new. Fire Department, we discussed those cylinders, but I think we just leave it as is, don't get them anything new. Roger, uh, I think what we might do is consider a side cutter and a couple of things. A side cutter can come out of the transportation fund. Uh, Roger did mention tonight, wanting Tom, uh, that's on the, the special group, bringing him on as an additional employee. That might be something we might wanna budget for.
What about the cutoffs?
And, and the cutoffs, oh.
Those are, those are, those are normal maintenance seals out in our attic. You know, I, I think in a budget, when you look at a budget, it's not nickel-and-dime deals, the thousand, two thousand dollars, it's the fifteen thousand dollar truck, I mean, they're, they're large items, and it's not nickel-and-dime items, because, you know, this is a million-dollar budget, and you turn yourself nuts trying to save, uh, twenty-five cents out of a million-dollar budget. You just, you just don't do it. You gotta look at, you gotta look at the big items, it costs a lot of money.
Let me finish, Mary.
Uh-huh.
What about the soft baby? Uh, well, that's transportation related, that can come out of the, the, yeah. Uh, let, let me finish my recommendation. Aside from the things that, that are purely transportation, come out of the transportation fund, uh, I would like to add money in there for, for that extra road guy. And that extra road guy is gonna give Roger a little cushion, to be able to give Gus a little cushion, 'cause Gus needed an extra guy. I mean, we'll keep him busy. Uh, as far as Lynn's concerned, I think she had a keeper kennel worker. That's gonna be an extra sixteen. And, uh, Gus, provide, I guess, internet for him and that extra computer, and we can come in under budget on those. But that, those are smaller things. Gus doesn't need anything big, except for a truck, but we might be able to maybe midstream if we find something in an auction.
Well.
I don't think that you, it's kind, those things, or in my opinion, I want to scream thirty for a second, but,
equipment, trucks break down from time to time, and you just have to go buy them. You just have to get out of the budget and go buy a truck, because you can't put people on viceages in this day and age.
I think step one is to look at anticipated revenue. Step two is to decide what type of a carryover you want to consider. And you've got a figure. Then compare it to that figure, and to the extent that, and I would think that the estimate of revenue would be hopefully within fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. And once you get the carryover, now you've got a pretty darn good idea of what you've got to play with. And also have some lead time in there, in case you screwed up on your estimate. Then compare in that figure to the figures that we have here, and see if we're coming in short or long. But just as Anthony's right, we can't worry about the small stuff, because some of that's gonna come in under budget, and, and, you know, midway through the season, you know, we can make our own little wish lists, and if after six months it looks like we're doing pretty, pretty good, we might, uh, go out on a limb a little bit and help some of these folks out. One thing that, uh, and I don't know, James may or may not agree with me, but I'm still wondering about the extra man that, uh, on the fire department, that, uh.
James isn't the only one.
Oh, you don't need no one.
Oh? Yeah, I, I don't think so. I, I.
Wouldn't he be the one to say if he needs more or not? I mean, he's the expert, and I don't think that any of these people are necessarily asking for.
When you ask for forty-five thousand dollars in budget, that's a lot of expense.
He, he has, uh, applied for a grant to get possibly four new guys, uh.
He's applied for lots of grants.
Yeah.
I did, I said nothing to you doing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand, you know, the fire department, but if you've got one chief and no Indians, is, now, I don't know how qualified or how many, uh, of the volunteers, and whether they can just walk in there and, and take over.
They didn't help me any. I had all, I had twenty-five farm, I had to do all, all of the stuff.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about paperwork, I'm talking about if it's a fire.
The paper said they got thirteen people.
Thirteen volunteers.
Volunteers.
Did you read that, did you read that letter today?
Are they qualified to give?
I suppose. They've all been through training.
If he's gone to Disney World, and there's a fire, is that department going to take care of it?
Of course, we all, Terry Lane's back on it.
That happens a lot.
And it's not his fire department, that's, that's ours, that's the people's fire department, and they want you to see us actually consider it, not just write it off on you.
He's got more papers, of course.
There's also a mutual aid agreement, too. If he's, if Eric's at Disney World, uh, Oliver's gonna come around, and Levins is gonna come out.
And you're far, he's been doing a lot, he's been trying to go more still with all of his trucks, so, so, I'll have none, Fair Grove, nowhere else.
If you can assure me that Buffalo's protected, I'm a happy camper.
I can assure you that it's protected, and it's not a threat in fighting a fire.
I used to assure you, but I can't anymore.
Why, your house burned, so you come live with me?
No, well, thank you.
I just know I've been there, so.
If your, if your house burns down, call your insurance agent, see if he's got enough money to pay you.
He's got insurance agent, it's only gonna be guaranteed.
Well, I guess we've got a six out of seven, anybody else, to be insured. Is everybody else in this area seven?
I don't, we're not a seven, are we? We're at like.
No, we're a six, whatever the heck that is.
Boy, class.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, the.
RIS.
Everybody else is either ten or nine or a ten. Buffalo's a nine.
Buffalo's a six.
Uh, Buffalo's a six.
Well, now that's not too good.
No. Well, let me tell you a.
It's better if we miss our fire department.
Now, there's a lot of things go with that.
Well, Eric told me a while back, we would need to spend a substantial amount.
We'd have to buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck.
To move it up.
To move it up. Not only the people, the truck, the, the truck's not big enough. But, you know, it doesn't cost, the only people, it just saves you a little money on your insurance.
Saves a lot of people on the insurance.
No, it don't save you that much.
But it saves a lot of people a little bit, so, I mean, wouldn't that be good to save some people some money if we can?
Not the kind of idea it caused to produce there, no. That's too much, that's a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, so that you can save the entire city of Buffalo three thousand dollars a year.
And, and keep in mind, this budget here that we're looking at, that's in the nice binder, notwithstanding wish lists, we need to cut sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars a day.
That's right.
But, okay. You might, I, I don't know, I don't, why is it a different number? Why am I coming up with a different number when I take our audit, and the amount that it says was our balance?
That's a Debbie question.
Twenty-eleven, well, I'm asking everyone to consider it.
What is the first number on that page you're looking at?
Fund balance, September thirtieth, two thousand eleven, five hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, two hundred, five thousand thirty-two hundred four sixty-three, sorry, I lost.
And what's the cash balance at the top?
It's the general fund, okay? And then, if you take the numbers off out of the actuals that you gave me, you said it should come up with two hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars, and it, it doesn't. It comes up three hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars.
The fir, oh, you're on page seventeen of the audit?
I'm on page nineteen of the audit.
Okay, if you'll flip back to page seventeen of the audit, the cash and cash equivalent is four fifty-one, eight ninety-nine. And the balance that I started with was four fifty-one, oh nine nine, I believe.
So, is end fund balance as of September is not correct? It's not?
It's, no, it's based on the cash and cash balance on page seventeen.
Cash, perhaps.
So what are these other things? These add balance taxes, sales taxes?
Um, your, your taxes receivable is staying the same, your prepaid insurance, your other receivable stays the same from year to year. So the. That's why we use the cash balance, and it looks like I must have dropped an eight in the carryover figure.
Are we richer?
Eight hundred dollars.
That's a good thing.
It's Labor Day.
Labor Day. Do we need Monday?
It's Labor Day.
Uh, thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
That's a second.
If we're not all washed away.
Who won't get two inches of rain? You know, is he going, that we get one minute?
We done got a steak dinner, haven't we?
If we give thirty-two thousand dollars, let's take dinner.
Well, I know Jess is wanting to go home and watch all Ryan.
And now women, I watched, I watched the Republicans protest. I felt so much better as women, I gotta, I have to listen to that. Now, you gotta remember, when we looked at this, people, this budget, what, what Debbie proposed, it has a two percent payroll increase. Was that right, Debbie? Two percent?
It was just a two percent rounding up of everybody's, yes.
Now, it's up there, about a two percent now. So as we try to figure out how we're gonna cut this sixty-six thousand dollars out of this budget.
It's on the table.
It's on the table. It can, it can be cut.
But then we wanna add things from the wish list.
And explain to me. And explain to me, in the, uh...
I tell you how some of the voodoo works here.
Voodoo's all right. I understand that.
We go back and use transportation fund, uh, money for transportation related stuff to figure out how much Roger's supplies were that were transportation related and we shift that money over. I'll take a little bit out of the transportation fund. It'll free up general revenue funds. Debbie, did you, you, you come up with a quick estimate the other day?
Yeah, based on moving one person and twelve thousand dollars in expenses, it was fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Did I understand it right? That, that it was two percent for wage increase?
Round it up two percent for everybody.
But that's two percent for each man?
Well, it's, it's just a number that's out there so that we could figure budget. And then normally you guys have kind of balanced it out and then you take and divide that two percent up however you want to.
Two, two percent for each employee.
It depend, every year it seems to be a little bit different. So, it's just, there's a, there's a plug amount in there for two percent for, for raises.
I like the way Wayne had proposed last year, figuring out how much we're out for each man instead of that two percent.
Yeah, no, that's just a figure plugged in there so that if you guys wanted to give raises, there was already an, an amount calculated in there.
I said, if we don't, we take that, yeah.
Right. Well, I just misunderstood it, Jess. I thought she was talking about, I thought we was talking about two percent for each person on their wages. And I didn't like the capital. I didn't like that idea. I liked Wayne's idea.
You wanna know the total that that would equal? I mean, I'll have to have my computer and pull those numbers because the spreadsheet's not out there.
Yeah, we need to look at each individual to see what, see what they're going. Because when you look, when you get ready to do this, Chris, I'm like, I have it someplace here.
Last year, it was four thousand forty-five cents an hour for everybody.
Yeah.
That keep... Well, then Debbie's gonna figure out what that two percent would cover if we just did a flat amount.
Well, when you look at it, right. See, we got, we got some of the ri-, some of the water department making anywhere from ten to fifteen. We got street department from ten forty to thirteen seventy.
I just hate to see the higher paid people get fifty or sixty cents an hour rate from nine dollars a man, only with thirteen cents as well.
I don't think Sam needs rate. Uh, I don't think Eric needs rates. I think Roger needs rate.
Yeah, I'd, I'd wanna give Roger disproportionately higher rates.
Right. You know, whenever I, when I look at it, I don't think that, uh, there's some people in here that, uh, I don't think they need any more money. When you look at, when you look at this schedule of, of what they're being paid, when you look at the responsibility Roger does for thirty-eight and Sam makes forty-one, see, I, I don't think that's in proportion.
I agree.
I mean, I can get Roger gunning, carry it and give him three thousand more rates.
Well, that'll take care of the dog population.
That'll take care of the dog population.
But you save on the mentor, Jess.
Yeah, he's got it. Yeah, sure, I know. But I think that when we sit down here and there too, that we need to look at this list. Now, Rachel, as Wayne is saying, there's some of these people we need to give some raises to and get them in balance a little bit. The good people, they need rates. The people that don't do much, don't need much.
Well, we'll do it that way instead of two percent across the board, obviously. I, I think everyone's agreed with that.
Two percent won't fly. Man, I know, but one...
Because two percent creates kind of a gulf, uh, between the, the higher paid employees.
Well, it gives everybody, when you do that, uh, you, you continue with a wage difference between individuals within, the gap is bigger...
All the time.
Within the own department. You get the gap bigger in the street department, the water department and...
Aren't the Democrats fighting against that national?
Do you remember when Red Artback used to put cigars in that, that Memphis, that selling to the women? Likewise, when I put my hat on that week.
The game's over. Make motion, adjourn.
I second that motion. I...
Well, Debbie's getting us some data.
What it rounds out to with the two percent, when you take it over, cross the board with everybody, it was five hundred and thirty-nine dollars per person is what was allocated for raises. And that was just not allocated, but just plugged in there as a number.
And, and what, what could that be as, on their hourly salary approximately?
Um, so that'd be twenty-five cents an hour?
Maybe, okay.
Yeah.
I think, I thought I heard that these last four years, the real income increase in America has not gone.
The cost of living was less than two percent. It was, it was, I mean, I always round up to the nearest percent and it was less than two percent.
Cost of living for sure.
Yeah.
Wayne, I didn't get a raise in my social security for three years. Where you going? I don't know.
At least you have and I probably won't be. All right, there's motion, adjourn. All those in favor? Second, adjourn. Who made the motion and who seconded it for, for adjourn?
Wayne made it and I seconded it.
And it's unanimous. Anyone against adjourn?
I wanna stay here all night.
They didn't want to abstain from that vote.